I would like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As this is our first regular meeting before the elections in November and needing to install officers of the Board of Education as the superintendent of schools, it's my responsibility to call the meeting to order and to begin the process for nomination of board officials, officers, excuse me. Do we have any motions for a chairperson of the Board of Education?
I would like to nominate Deborah Shute for Chair of the Board of Ed.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor to nominate Ms. Deborah Shute as the chairperson of the Board of Education. All in favor? Aye. Eight, you voted for yourself, I assume, when you see your hand. Nine, one, two, zero. Congratulations, Ms. Shute.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back as the chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'll continue to elect board officers. Do I have a nomination for the vice chair of the Board? Laura?
I would like to nominate Jay Skivak as our vice chair.
Laura nominates, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie Belaya. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Suspected? Passed unanimously. Now we'll move on to Board Secretary. I'm sorry, we'll clap for everybody. All right, now for Board Secretary. Do I have a nomination for Board Secretary? Lisa?
I would like to nominate Jeff Fleischman.
Okay, Jeff Fleischman, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Laura seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Suspected? Passed unanimously. Congratulations to Jeffrey and Jackie. All right, thank you, everyone. We're looking forward to do good work together. So our next item on the agenda is we also have to rethink about our positions on the different subcommittees that we belong to. As Board of Ed members, for those of you in the audience, we not only attend these monthly meetings, we also delve deeper into certain topics by joining subcommittees and doing that work together as well. We only have four members on each committee, so today what I'm going to ask, I have forms here, if you can just write down what you'd like and I'll make these decisions within the next two days and send you a formal email listing what your assignments are. If you could put them, let me pass this down, write your name at the top, in order of priority, what your subcommittee interests are. If you're interested in being the chair of such a committee, just put a star next to that. We do have the four, first Finance, Negotiations, Curriculum and Professional Practices, and finally Policy. So if you wouldn't mind, just take a couple minutes to write. Does anybody have any questions? And then I'll just collect those back. Alvin, we're just deciding on subcommittee assignments that I'd like to participate in, so who's that just joined us? Do you want to pass them down this way?
I didn't want to start a conversation with you guys focused.
The next item on our agenda, I had the opportunity to speak with each board member about this already, but just wanted to state it in a meeting. The position of the board liaisons, traditionally for a number of years, I don't know exactly when it began, we had a board liaison to the Board of Finance, Town Council, we started joining the CPDC with the Curriculum and Professional Development Council, and we also have the CREG Council that consists of board members from all over the state, correct Jackie, or whoever's involved with CREG?
In the region.
Okay, in the region, got it. So I believe what we all kind of have talked about, I think it makes more sense with all of the obligations we already have by attending these meetings as well as attending our subcommittee meetings, that holding the liaison positions isn't necessary for every single meeting. If we appear on an agenda, we certainly would have a representative of the Board to attend in order to speak to the topic, so that would either be myself or Dr. Carnamola or another representative from central office or administrative team. But for now, I think we can let those positions pass and we'll just pay attention to their agendas to watch what the work is that they're doing and read their minutes as we usually do to stay apprised of their work. So I think that makes sense. And then for the CPDC, just allow administrators and the staff to work together without necessarily having a goodwill ambassador from the Board attend. I think we can discuss what the topics were when we all get together. And so I just wanted to share that. I think we're all on the same page with that, am I correct? Okay, excellent. So what I'd like to do now is move us into the Avon Achievers. This is the best part of the meeting. I believe, I'd like to read the mission statement to remind us all while we're here, since we're impacting the students, we have so many in the room tonight, it's exciting to have you join us. "Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility." So it's come to our awareness that unfortunately, half of our administrative team is out with the flu, so we don't have Mr. Rankwitz here to celebrate you, but Dr. Carnamola is excited to be able to share this moment with you as well, so I'll allow Dr. Carnamola to come forward and speak to all of these students that we're recognizing tonight.
Thank you. Just for a moment, for the record, say, we have a couple of confirmed cases, but we definitely have a number of administrators that have been out as a result of whatever it is that we have going around. So I apologize to the students and to your parents that we're not able to have the high school administration here tonight. I just wanted to take a minute before we start calling you up to recognize how you even came to be sitting here. As you know, we are recognizing students who are National Merit semifinalists in the scholarship competition for 2020, and I think many people don't necessarily know what that means except to have heard of it. I think we've all heard of National Merit Scholars, but don't realize just how difficult it is to be a semifinalist or a finalist. More than a million and a half students apply for this on an annual basis, and it's only just shy of 1% of the country's graduating seniors that could be recognized even as semifinalists. To be able to qualify, it starts with taking your PSATs in junior year or an early SAT score, and that score will initially qualify you. So there isn't a specific score every single year, it fluctuates, but it starts with that score. And as you move forward to be able to apply, you have to demonstrate an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, write an essay, and again earn scores on your next SAT or your ACT that are commensurate with the first or better. So you see, it's not very easy to be one of these young people who are sitting here this evening. I wanted to recognize how that came to be and to wish you luck as you continue. These are very talented and driven high school seniors, for sure, and they have the opportunity to continue to compete for 7,600 National Merit Scholarships worth more than $31 million. So a round of applause for all of them. We have a board member that will come out with me, and I hope I've gotten all of your names correct. Okay. You are not in alphabetical order, you are in order of the certificates that happen to be here. So we'll have you all come up one at a time, give you your certificate, and then we'll take a picture of the entire group with the board, okay? So first I'll, we have Daniel Agar. I don't know if Sahithi can get this one right, sorry. Sahithi Barjala. To the chair, the Jew. Want to take a picture?
Absolutely.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Should we all just come in the center?
Come back forward here. Yep, bring your certificates. And we'll go everywhere in the hall. This is the time of the conference, our parents, grandparents, uncles, folks around here. So if you can come into the center. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know it might need you to, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Abby. Congratulations.
We'll have a method to the madness. We'll look in the center first, then we'll look to the left, then we'll look to the right, for the matter of where you are. All right, good. I commend you guys. Yes? Okay, so let's look at the center first for the official. Just one picture. Okay, to the left?
Hey, really to the left.
Is that everyone? Oh, one, to the right. Thank you, congratulations again.
meeting, but unfortunately, the weather did not allow us to hold our meeting at that time, so we've invited him to join us here tonight, and I'm glad he was able to clear his schedule and be here. I will start with the comments, and I would certainly love to allow other board members to chime in, or if anyone else is here to celebrate Houston as well. Just by noting, you're hard to forget, Houston. You're going to leave a lasting impression on all of us. I don't know if you want to stand for us, everybody knows who we're acknowledging, if there are people here that haven't seen you in a bit.
Stand up, Houston.
Come on, take your moment, take your moment. So I'd like to share that Houston served on the Board of Ed for 14 years. That's a long time to give service to this community, unpaid no less. He did work on our committees as well. He served as chair, he served as secretary, so he's acted in many capacities. Something that I always found fascinating about Houston was that he also graduated Avon High School. I don't know if you want to share what year that was.
A while ago. That was great. I was part of the inaugural class of Roaring Brook School.
Excellent. Oh my gosh, that's great. So we all appreciated having Houston's perspective, not only having been a student here in Avon, but also it was never doubted that your integrity for doing what's best for our students was always at the tip of every piece of what you said during your decision-making, during your discussions, during your leadership. And so we are very grateful for the time that you've served. I've always enjoyed this kind of year with you because you'd come in with different scarves and you have many different expressions that I will forever remember when I'm thinking of Houstonisms. And so I'm just grateful that you made yourself available. I would like to present you with a gift, and I do want everyone to please speak, but I will say that once we've gone through saying all our accolades, I hope you'll join us in the hallway. We have cake to celebrate Houston this month.
It's always important to have cake. I'm a big fan of cake.
So I'll continue, Houston. I appreciate it all, your time for the students and your passion for education, your dedication, and your wisdom, your humor, and always reminding us that we are responsible for anything we go over budget.
I was the prior superintendent to get a legal opinion to confirm I was actually right.
Thank you.
So again, thank you, Houston, for your knowledge, your wisdom, and especially, I think a lesson we can all take away from the work that you've done is you've never been afraid to be that unique, loving voice on any issue. So appreciate that courage and bravery and eloquence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, Ken. So I'll echo everything that's been said so far, Houston, but what I want people to understand is while you brought humor, you also brought a wealth of knowledge and experience and perspective, and you truly felt committed to the community and the students here in Avon. Students, not children.
Thank you.
When I started on the Board two years ago, you reached out to give some guidance, advice, and wisdom, and it was not about politics, it wasn't about party affiliation, it was truly about doing good work for the students here in Avon. And I thank you, you shared a tremendous amount of knowledge and wisdom that was very important, and I know when I started out two years ago on the Board. So I thank you and you'll be dearly missed.
Pleasure. Thank you, John.
Well, Houston, I didn't have the pleasure of working with you, but I did admire what I observed. So you will be sorely missed, I'm sure, by all your other colleagues, and I really am sorry that I didn't have the pleasure of working with you.
Thank you.
I remember when I first arrived as a new board member and Houston was the chair, and I came into this thinking that it was going to be a lot of partisan chaos like we see at the state and federal levels, and just a miniature version of that. I found out from Houston, it was nothing like that at all. He was running the meetings in a very straightforward way, and we were just talking about the issues and trying to get things done for the students of the town. And so Houston's leadership was really my first experience with that, and that's how I discovered that it wasn't going to be partisan chaos, at least not most of the time. And so he was set a good example for us all.
I've had so much fun working with you, and I've learned so much from you, but I really wanted to thank you that my four kids have benefited from your expectations, your prioritizing achievement for all learners, and I'm just really grateful for that. I feel like I had a lot of fun when I tangled with you. We didn't always agree on everything, and it was always kind of an adventure, and it was never boring. So I'm going to miss you, and I just hope you accept my gratitude for all that you've done for the district and for all of our kids.
Of course, and thank you.
Well, mostly, I'm going to have such a hard time figuring out how to replace you in the seat that you sat in here, but also in your committee work. I cannot imagine a policy committee without you on it, because your knowledge and your exactness with words and your willingness to go through, sometimes we'll have 80 to 100 pages in front of us, and you will find that one word or that one phrase that either is really just out of whack or just totally incorrect or really needs further examination. And your dedication to this Board is immeasurable, and the time that you've given, people don't have any idea how much time you've actually put in here.
Thank you.
You were a great mentor to me and always listened and never afraid to give an opinion. I'll miss that.
Houston, I completely agree with Laura. She said almost exactly what I was thinking. First of all, the time and effort you gave to Avon and the students over 14 years of serving on this Board is commendable to say the least. And second, I mean, we really are at a loss because, you know, you were in my time serving with you, a person who literally somehow thought of everything. You know, you did not miss anything, like Laura said, it could be a column or a semicolon or it wasn't supposed to be a policy or, you know, some case law from 1965 or Somalia or something along those lines. But, you know, listen, you were a vast well of knowledge, and I'm glad you're still around, and if, you know, I or we need something, I'm glad to know you're still here for somebody to lean on. So thanks for everything.
If I can ever help, I appreciate your guide words. I'm certainly available, and with my newfound time, I will spend more time at the UN. I've already started a new book that I'm a co-author of, and I finished my first article, so thank you for allowing me to pursue other passions, but I've enjoyed working with all of you.
So the chair, if I may. So if you weren't here when this happened, it may seem out of place, but I think it's a perfect example of Houston's humor and quick wit, which are often very necessary as we sit and do business that we do. December 1st, 2017, I got a phone call from the then-search consultant who was helping this Board of Education for its next superintendent to let me know that I was the recommended candidate. And I went through the rest of that day in a little bit of a fog, trying to really comprehend what this might mean as a change for me in life. Fast forward, I accept the job, obviously, I'm sitting here, and we are sitting at a meeting much like this, I'm in the audience, there's a cake, and Houston, and Houston, I think was probably sitting right around here if I remember correctly. And as they're all welcoming me on board, Houston says that he could only imagine what the scene was like when I got the phone call that I had, that deemed the recommended candidate. He said that he thought, quote, "Looked something maybe like the scene out of Risky Business," where Tom Cruise is singing, taking those old records off, yes, you remember. And I'm sitting in the audience thinking, what? What does that mean? And I'm embarrassed, on the one hand, on the other hand, we all just started laughing, and I said, well, I guess maybe, you know, it was a little something like that. He knew that I was, I had said to him as the then-chair of the Board of Education, that I had actually gotten the phone call while I was getting dressed for work. So suddenly it made sense that that was the twist that Houston had put together. And those kinds of stories and what we, I think, already call our Houstonisms, I think I said one of them last week at the policy committee meeting, the mother of pie and apple hood version, as Houston would say, are going to be sorely missed. And anytime that someone with this much institutional knowledge walks away from an assignment like this, it's a loss that's felt for a while. So I know that you'll be on the other end of the phone anytime that I or any of us call. And the last thing I wanted to say was, so Houston, you may or may not know, is a pretty good photographer, and every year he has cards made, I believe, probably for himself, I think I've seen a couple of those, but also for others that we've been lucky enough to be beneficiaries of. And he chooses quotes to go inside, and there's, well, there's two in particular that I think speak to exactly who Houston is, and also that maybe brought me here to you also, because I knew that I had a like-minded individual on the other end of the phone, minus the dancing in the underpants version at the board meeting. Two quotes from you, Houston, that I think represent exactly who you are. First of all, "There is no great genius without a mixture of madness," Aristotle. But more importantly, here's to the crazy ones, the misfits, the rebels, the troublemakers, never you, the round pegs and the square holes, the ones who see things differently. They're not founded rules, and we have no respect for the status quo. You can quote them, disagree with them, glorify or vilify them, but the only thing you can't do is ignore them, because they change things. They push the human race forward. And while some may see them as the crazy ones, we see genius, because the people who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do.
Thank you.
You represent that for me. Thank you, Houston.
Well, you directed this point to say, cake time.
It is cake time. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to acknowledge Houston?
I just want to say that NowHankTV serves eight towns, that's a lot of meetings that can be kind of dry. This is by far the most entertaining one. I've stolen so many jokes from Mr. Lowry, and I also have the utmost respect for how you handle yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. So knowing that many of you are here to celebrate Avon Achievers and Houston, we welcome you to join us in the hallway. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, enjoy cake, and if you'd like to leave after that, you won't offend us at all. So we'll recess for 10 minutes. All right, so now let's move to approve the minutes for the Board of Ed's special meeting on November 19th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Jackie, second.
Second.
Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed unanimously. Board of Education, regular monthly meeting, November 19th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Jackie again, second.
Second.
By Laura. She beat you to it, David. All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, Board of Education, special meeting, December 18th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Jason, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that one passes unanimously as well. Now we move on to communication from the public, for those of you who have remained with us. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward and speak? Please come forward. If you don't mind using the microphone to say your name and address or the [inaudible].
Is it you I'm talking to?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Negan Baubau. I live at [inaudible] Road. I have three children attending public school, A-10 schools. You may know me from my letters and attendance at Town Council and Board of Ed meetings last year, helping to expose the issues with the proposed use of chrome rubber in the turf field and helping to ensure Avon uses safer and more environmentally friendly material. So I'm back again to raise awareness about a separate issue which I believe is infinitely more serious than the chrome rubber. I recently sent a letter to the Board about a discriminatory bill which some of our state legislators would like to have made into law. Public testimony is scheduled to be heard on February 19th. We don't have the language yet, but we know that the bill will propose to remove the religious exemption to vaccination. While the majority of students at Avon choose to accept the full vaccination schedule, there are a minority who choose to use a religious exemption or medical exemption to opt out of one or more vaccinations in order to attend school. This religious exemption has been in place for over 60 years in the state of Connecticut, and all but a handful of states in our country allow students to use a religious exemption in order to attend school. You should be aware that it is likely that our legislators also intend to mandate that RISIL HPV vaccine, which is currently optional. This will mean any male or female student over the age of 12 who has not received that vaccine will likely have to do so in order to attend school next year. There will be no way for these students to opt out of it if the religious exemption is removed. I know many people who fully vaccinate their children but avoid that vaccine due to concerns about its safety. The parents in our community have no idea this is about to happen and that they may be required to give that vaccine in order to attend school next year. There are serious ramifications to school districts if this pass, bill passes into law. My letter that I sent highlights some of those issues. The bottom line is that this bill is not about health. We are clearly not facing a dangerous infectious disease epidemic in our schools today. This bill is about freedom to send our children to school without pharmaceutical injections, our freedom to raise our children as we see fit, our right to a public education, and our right to practice our religion without discrimination. This bill targets and discriminates against a small minority of students, forcing them to homeschool or move out of state to be afforded a public education. These students will be effectively removed from their community and discriminated against, no longer being able to attend school with their friends, participate in school sports or music or theater, or attend prom and graduation with every other public school student in Avon. Imagine how this would negatively impact a teen who is treated as too dirty or diseased to attend school with his or her peers. to attend school with his or her peers. I would be happy to meet with you to provide more background about this issue. In case you are interested, there are two press conferences at the Capitol in the morning of February 5th which address this bill. In closing, I hope that the Avon Board of Ed can help ensure all students in our districts are afforded the right to a public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baobao. It's not customary to have board members respond, but we take your information in. I appreciate you sharing that with us. Is there anyone else who's here who would like to come forward and speak? Okay, not seeing any. Move on to items of information and proposals. So Alvin, what would you mind giving us an update on what's happening in the schools?
Sure. So since we haven't met in approximately two months now, there are a lot of things that happened. First, to kick off December, we had two grade snow days, which was very, very well-received with the student body, especially in this class. December also saw the mock trial team move on to the regional stage, which is excellent. It's the first time that this has happened, as well as the first publication of a school newspaper, a school-student-run newspaper in, give or take, a year or so. In addition, at the end of the year, we also saw investment team make the regional stage as well. Coming up now is midterms, which closes out for a semester, and things are starting to get hectic again.
Thank you, Alvin. I appreciate that. Financial report, Ms. Shahn.
Your financial report depicts the most activity for the employer, health insurance, administrative, and stop loss fees for the period running from July to December totaled $491,063.20, which was entered in December. Just as a reminder, the employer premium medical share was entered in November and that totaled just over $1.4 million. So that was the most activity that we saw in December. Again, the town prepares the invoicing for our side of the fees, ASO fees and stop loss, and they will likely provide that within the next couple of months, comes about quarterly. So we'll see that journaled likely in March.
Any questions about that? Thank you, Ms. Shahn. Moving forward, our committee reports, Curriculum and Professional Practices, Jackie.
Our next meeting, really it's our first meeting of the 2020, will be February 3rd at Central Office. It's actually going to be a workshop. I think the superintendent has invited all board members to participate. I would really like to see as much participation as possible because I know there's a lot of interest among board members. I'm hoping it will be a true workshop style where we will have all the department heads there and we'll be able to ask questions and have a real productive time together where we can kind of better out some of the things that I know will pop up during the course of the year. So we'll look at the course studies, we'll get that, we'll go through that. I'm thinking it's at 6:30 unless any other, is that a good time for board members to come to that subcommittee meeting or is that a difficult time? Is 6:00 too early?
I have 6:00 a.m. and it's actually here in the [inaudible].
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Did I say a.m.?
It's a workshop.
Oh, my goodness. So we'll be here all day.
Real workshop.
But it's here in this room.
6:00 a.m.
Oh, it's here. Okay, we're going to be here. Oh, yes, that's right, because we talked about bringing the tables together. I'm sorry. So the meeting is going to be here in the conference room. Go ahead, Jeff.
I just have a question regarding, is it possible to make sure, since we're going through the program of study, that we have access to the high school curriculum to make those comparisons and make sure they line up for purpose?
I would hope we would have that for that meeting.
They are online, Jeff, but I will double check.
If we have access?
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, all the department heads will be present, so it will be a good time to kind of run some of those things. Is 6 o'clock doable for people in this, on the wider board, 6:00 p.m. or is that too much of a stretch?
We haven't officially figured out the committee assignments though.
Mm-hmm. We can do it? Okay.
It's a workshop.
Okay, so we'll do it at 6:00 and then if people come in a little bit late, you know, that's fine, but that would be great. That would give everybody more time to kind of sit together. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Finance, Jay.
So at our last finance subcommittee meeting, the only transfer that was $25,000 or greater was one that was dealing with various unanticipated HVAC repairs at RBS, the leak at PGS, which the board was already aware, and elevator repairs at AMS. And that's in our package and part of our consent calendar. But besides that, there's nothing else of substance to bring up now from that meeting. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 11th at 6:00 p.m.
At Central Office.
Yes.
Thank you, Jay. Negotiations, Jason?
Negotiations with the food service workers are ongoing. That's all I have.
All right.
Do we have a date on the next meeting? Okay.
There's still one back and forth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy, Laura?
At our last meeting, we discussed three policies, primarily bullying, prevention, and intervention, the school calendar setting and graduation date, and controversial issues, particularly through the lens of as that policy relates back to instructional material. The majority of the changes that we are looking at have mostly to do with changes to the state statutes. So we sometimes even get ahead of them and will be doing what is expected of us before we actually revise our policies. So that's what we're working on and you will see under New Business, you have a first read of the school calendar setting and graduation date revision, which we have already discussed, obviously, because we had to do that. The next policy meeting will be at 6:00 on February 4th and we will be continuing to sort through some of this with more input from council.
Thank you very much. Now our liaison reports, so this might be the final month. Other than I did make a mistake, we are keeping our correct position because that makes sense. And Jackie Blaia had offered to maintain that role, so that will be the one liaison report that we'll still continue to have. But in the meantime, I can speak to the board rep to the Curriculum and Professional Development Council. There was one this month, but seeing as we were making the decision to no longer hold that role, I did not attend that meeting and unfortunately Donna is under the weather, so she can't speak to it at this time. I do know that they were working on more visions of the graduate.
I could speak to it.
Okay, so we'll get to it later. Okay, so thank you. Board rep to the Board of Finance, was there anything, David, that you had attended?
No.
Correct. Okay, thank you. And how about Town Council? I think that was [inaudible].
No, I have not been to a Town Council meeting since the last one.
The last one was probably the capital improvement one that we attended?
Yes.
And they acknowledged David Peña as well. I believe that was the last one that was held. How about the crack council?
I was unable to attend the last meeting and I am meeting with the director, Greg Florio, on Thursday for a one-on-one meeting and he will bring me up to speed for anything I miss and I wanted to kind of get the points I needed to convey to all of you people, so I'll really do that next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. I misspoke, I forgot Bill Stokesbury was also recognized at the last Town Council meeting as well. So it's been, I think it's been handled really well, everybody. It's really appreciative of the work that the elected officials put in, so that was nice. Thank you, Jackie, if you continue that role, we would appreciate that. And we'll look forward to hearing from you for the next time. Next is the board chair update. I really don't have anything other than a reminder, we do have that state legislative breakfast coming up on February 20th. If board members are interested in attending, it begins at 8:00 a.m., I believe. And you do need to RSVP with Shirley in order to ensure that you have a packet of information that they hand out to everyone. They have like a continental-style breakfast, just like Dana's and things of that nature, but then they do update you on what's the inner workings going on at that time. Or I think it was Jason, myself, and Houston with Dr. Carnivale.
Yeah, it was an interesting experience.
Yep, so if you are interested, please let Shirley know. Otherwise, I was just going to put another plug in for Jackie's upcoming workshop, since we are going to be discussing the program of studies, it would be good to have us all there in the same room to participate and have the same conversation. So hopefully everyone can clear their calendar to attend that. Another piece that I'm trying to think of, I think that's it for now, so I'll just move on to Dr. Carnivale's superintendent's report.
Thank you. So on page 23, you see the hiring report. Our new school psychologist, Ms. Ziloski began at Pine Grove and Mr. Boudreaux's official transfer to the high school started at the beginning of the year, as well as Mr. Markham's to Thompson Brook, as I mentioned at our last meeting that they would. We also have a long-term substitute hired at Thompson Brook as a school counselor to take the place of Miss Chase while she is out on maternity leave. She did have her baby, congratulations. And at the middle school, we have a special ed teacher, a long-term sub also, Kelly Zills. And we already were aware of these resignations even at the last meeting, mentioned about Ms. Mascoli, for example, and we have someone in her place, type B. Go to page 24, we see Ms. Heather Ross has taken over for Ms. Mascoli as the student assistance tutor. We have brought in two new pair educators here at high school, a new TA at Rory Brook. These are refilled positions, new positions, these TAs. And we saw the resignation of Cynthia Armstrong, who had, you may remember, had been at the middle school and transferred down to Thompson Brook at the beginning of the school year. Her husband, fortunately for them and unfortunately for us, had a great opportunity in another state, and so she resigned and we are looking at that replacement now. We also saw the resignation of, you barely seen the beginning of, but the resignation of Emily, I always say her last name wrong, [inaudible]. 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 Yes, as our assistant director of nutrition services. You know, that's a new position that we had put in. It has been very difficult to fill. And we'll put that, it's already posted again, I believe, and we'll keep moving forward there. Likewise, we had Jeff Redman's son, our teacher here at AHS. His son, Matthew Redman, had been working with us as a pair educator. He is in school to get a degree and he is moving forward with his internship in student teaching at this time. So we're sad to see him, though he had done a great job while he was here. And also resignation of Margaret Cooper from Rory Brook, who we are also, a free place that is also posted. So time has changed with us not being together for that month. Our enrollment report, you see we are up to 14 students since our last report. We had no more registrations over the last two months. I think maybe six of the 14 seemed to come in the same day, if I remember correctly, Shirley, between our last meeting and now. On the strategic plan update, that's where, thank you, Ms. Shu, at the Curriculum and Professional Development Council on January 9th, we spent the majority of the day working on our vision of the graduate. Remember that we had sent out a thought exchange to everyone in the community, all employees, everyone that works in any role, students and community members to put in their thoughts about the essential skills and knowledge that our graduates should have to help forward this vision of the graduate. We took in all of those responses and discussed them, prioritized them, utilized the priorities that were done by individuals as they put them in. Remember, you could either put a new thought in or you could star the thoughts of others. So we took the top five of those and we will be bringing them to the board and doing a similar activity next. So it was a very productive day, though. Very difficult day, a lot of defining of terms of what we mean by certain items because one of the first things that you do is to make sure that you all have a common understanding of what it is that you're talking about. So I'll give a small example, we spent quite a bit of time talking about compassion versus empathy. It's just one example of how we define terms and which one it would be that we were talking about teaching students. Similarly, for example, when we're talking about critical thinking, what does that actually look like? How would we define it? We saw it. And so that was a long day of work there that will continue. And also is the kickoff for additional neascup preparation work here at high school. So they have carried some of that forward from the 9 to 12 angle. Also, our administrative team is participating in our mid-year retreat on January 29th. That's the entire administrative team from district going the evening of January 29th to Hartford. We have, remember, the past year or two, almost now, been partnering with three other school districts in doing that at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, which gives us both a community of practice but also reduces costs as we all get together and do it and use one central location and facilitators who are the same that have worked here with us from the Center for School Change and have also met most of you as board members as part of the review that they did with us last year. So we're looking forward to that. By way of other updates, I'll wait until New Business because I'll speak to a couple of pieces that Dr. Rusak would have spoken to if she were here tonight that are on our New Business.
All right. So now moving on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Moved by Jackie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed extensions? Pass unanimously. I would just like to acknowledge the donations and ask that a letter be sent on the board to have our gratitude for, yes, offering such, thank you. Now we move on to New Business, the Avon High School grades 10 and 12 ELA primary instructional materials.
So normally, in the past, you may remember, these had been on the consent calendar when we brought instructional materials. And I believe it was our Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee before last, not the last meeting, but the one before that.
October?
It was the October meeting, what we had decided in talking about instructional materials, namely books, was that when we brought them forward to the board, as we opened the 30-day window for review, we would put them on New Business. And so at the last board meeting, however, they were not listed under New Business. Dr. Rusak spoke to them, seems like a million years ago at this point, but she spoke to the materials that had come through both CPDC and the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee, had been approved by both, and that the review window was opening. So the review window did open for books that we're looking at tonight and subsequently actually has technically closed. But they weren't listed under New Business and we had decided to do that. We went back through the minutes, listened to them again, trying to figure out how we decided to move them forward, and that was the way it should be. So we originally said after that October meeting, we put them on New Business at the 30-day opening of the review, and then when the 30 days were over, if we still were doing instructional materials forward, in other words, there hadn't been any concerns brought forward after they had been approved, then we would put them on the consent calendar. So in other words, if they had been on New Business last time, we've asked them to be on the consent calendar tonight. They weren't on New Business last time, even though it's been more than 30 days. So we determined the best path forward was to put them on New Business so we could have a discussion about them tonight. Because six of one have dozen of them, they're either on consent calendar and they could be approved, or they're on New Business and they could be approved. Hopefully we get to have discussion with their new business.
So are you saying the clock starts ticking for 30 days again from today?
No.
Since they've been on the consent? Would you like to do that?
No. And the reason for that is because when these were brought forward, these are actually for second semester, and so they were brought forward in October. And because we opened the window, then we didn't have our December meeting, we have actually not moved them forward and they're needed at the high school for the courses that are beginning. All of the books that are listed are, as you can see on page 43, all but one, I believe, yes, the 10 book. All of these books are for grade 12 ECE courses in English. So these are all books that students can choose to read. These are not required texts in these ECU courses, with the exception of the Salvage the Bones book for grade 10. That one is obviously not an ECE class in grade 10.
Can you say obviously because it?
Because we don't have any ECE classes in ELA.
Because we have ECE classes for grade 10 for other?
None, yeah, not in ELA. Right. So these are elective classes for students, all the 12th grades, so the first they're elective class to begin with, that's an early college experience, and the books are, which is also [inaudible].
So I do have some concerns. One, from a curricular standpoint, all the books indicate that these books have been read, in some cases used in the past. Are these books currently being used in other courses in the curriculum?
So I have to be honest with you, I didn't bring these through, so I don't, I can't I didn't bring these through, so I don't, I can't cross-reference that.
Because my other concern is, obviously, the one that we've heard public comment about is the kite runner.
Kite runner, yes.
And so it's an indication that the kite runner, at least, has been used. I know it's been questioned about what's been approved and not been approved, but my first concern is if there's a book already being used somewhere else in the sequence, it doesn't make educational sense to then place it somewhere else in the sequence. Right? If it's been taught already, why are we given the opportunity to teach at the senior level? So, everyone at the 12th grade said, this book has been read, in some cases, used in the past. So that is my first hesitation of education speaking.
So just for clarity, you're saying, if, for example, because we have heard this before, you're assuming maybe they're reading it in 10th or 11th as required reading? Why are we putting it up?
I.
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
That's exactly it.
I can say this, none of them are on the list that we have of required reading for any other grade level.
Okay.
Meaning, they may have been read by choice at other grade levels, but I, to back up to, I think, the question you're actually asking me, now that I've listened to what you've said, these are not required books on our list for any other.
So I think the first thing I would say is, if we're going to approve these books to be used in the 12th grade ECE, I would discourage the use in other English courses throughout high school.
Right.
Right? Because they're designed and tailored specifically for the learning objectives of that course.
Correct.
To address the issue regarding what we heard regarding the kite runner, one of the things that I know, the concern was raised about allowing people the option. I think the scenario that was presented in public comment was, it wasn't optional. So I was glad to see that if we choose to go forward with this, the ECE, it's in that final unit where it's student optional. So to speak to the individual's concern that a student does not have to.
Correct.
Read that element.
They are, they are on the approved list from University of Connecticut, though, for the syllabus piece that has to be approved through them for the course to be able to be taught here as possible readings.
So my concern is the initial concern I raised about, structurally speaking, if we're going to approve this for the ECE.
It shouldn't be read elsewhere.
Should not be read elsewhere.
Correct.
Can I clarify? Because I've heard this feedback before, rereading of the same book even at earlier grades in high school, but being used to teach maybe different skills? So is that an opportunity where you might be okay with approving that?
I would like to see the curriculum.
Curriculum.
I would like to see the curricular goals and see how, A, that is different, and B, I'm not satisfied that they could not find an alternative text to meet those same objectives.
I think I understand what you're saying too, Bob. And I guess my question would be, I don't know how far we can go with this particular concern, because I understand both of the concerns, but we don't really know, without Donna being here, I don't think, if this is actually required reading in another course. And for me, I guess even if it was required reading, I think, I guess, I'm not sure why we are reapproving this book, or if this is just kind of due diligence to make sure that this new grade 12 ECE class is getting it on the list. But if that's just an option, I don't know why we wouldn't say, maybe some people would want to reread it. I don't know why that would be a.
I would ask just to hear the curricular rationale. In terms of all the, I understand that there are certain standards that have to be met by the end of the nine, 12 experience, right? That I can't see you not being able to find an alternative books for the students to go through to still meet those standards, right? The goal should probably be to expose students to a breadth of literature. In addition, I have some concerns about that reusing of the literature book, because I don't know if you're going to get the maximum benefit in terms of learning from that.
I agree. So to your point, Jackie, I am saying that these are not on the list that I have of required readings for any of the other of those classes, regardless of Donna.
So if it's not required anywhere, then I don't know, then the student, it's hard to kind of follow students around and decide what they're going to pick for choice every year, right? I mean, we can't really impact that.
We can't, well, personal choice, we have no impact on, but these are being given as a choice for the final unit. So students, it looks like, for me and the material, in that final unit, students are going to be handed a list of books, choose one of those. I just want to make sure that none of these books are on those approved choice lists for any other course leading up to this.
So you want to avoid the redundancy of that?
That's it.
Right. Understood.
And I think if it's, this scenario would speak to the concern that was raised by the public regarding allowing opportunity for choice on this book.
Can you just explain for us the voting here, recommended 27 to zero, 26 to one, those are?
Our Curriculum and Professional Development Council, that.
And they have read the book, or is it, you know, how, what's the requirement for that book? I think I've sat on a couple of those books in meetings.
So, did you want to speak to it from sitting on the committee?
I'm just curious, just to, yeah, no, just curious, so is it required of the voters to have read that book when they vote?
It is the English department bringing the books forward, have read the books. It is not the requirement of everyone on that committee to have read all of the books. They are provided them as a part of being on the committee. They are given the synopsis, they have a discussion about it in the meeting, I think you've probably been a part of that, and then after it makes it through that committee, it comes to Curriculum and Professional Practices, and we discuss it there, they're open, the window, so to speak, by our policy is opened for the 30-day review for anyone to read the book and comment on it.
And we did do that for these books at the end of that October meeting?
Yes.
Can you clarify again that it was also part of UConn's suggested list for the slots?
Yes, for these classes, yes.
Suggested or required?
They have a list of books that you can use, so you have to, you do have to mesh with what they would be utilizing if they were taking the course at UConn.
So theoretically, they probably would.
Would it be for new books? Yes.
Can I just ask, who wrote the synopsis?
Uh, the.
Because I read all the synopses of every book.
The English, the English department wrote the synopsis of books for the Curriculum and Professional Development Council.
It says the teacher's name on the top card. Opposed by?
Yeah.
So Jenna Alesworth is department coordinator for English for grades seven through 12, so she would be the one that brings those forward to the committee. And this, again, this is, this is our current policy, that these are the way instructional materials are brought forward in this committee.
What type of feedback would consist, a concern, either from members of the public or in that 30 window, what have you seen in the past that?
I haven't seen any.
Like, not just for this, but?
I haven't seen any since I've been there. We had the conversation that we had at the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee, and that we had here, but in terms of feedback coming through the window, that's the only feedback you can say, what you've also heard.
Do we have a sense of how much the public has taken on this responsibility, I call it, of the public to review these? Do we have a sense of how many parents and members of the community have come and reviewed these books?
For this particular set, honestly, I can't say. I didn't, I didn't ask out of that question. I don't know that anyone came for these. I have, I will say, I have seen people into review books in the past. These particular, I don't know, to be honest with you, since October, anyone has actually come in to review them. They do that through the curriculum office.
So one thought is, do we, as a board, want to encourage the public to take a more active role in reviewing this, maybe publishing this in a more public venue, I suppose, or raising that awareness? Because I know, you know, it's apparent, it wasn't where it was.
Hey, if I might, I do think that's important, and especially in light of the conversations that we've been having at the subcommittee level, and pertaining to what Jeff was talking about. I personally think that would be a great discussion for our workshop, because I think that will pertain also to kind of how we move going forward. I don't think that we can force people to participate, but we might be able to communicate more clearly where to find the synopsis, sort of, things like that. But I would, I would hope that would be a great conversation, possibly, to have at that curriculum workshop that might be a piece of it.
Are you envisioning that workshop to the public input, or no? Is member?
No, I'm not, I don't think the workshops are public. I think they're open to the public, but not, I don't think there's public comment.
No comment from the public?
Not at that point, because we're just still kind of working it out between the directors and the board.
Okay. But comment from other members who aren't part of that committee, potentially?
That's why we're inviting the entire board, because.
So they're able to comment.
So that all year long, instead of kind of patching, you know, fixing things as they come up, my hope is that we can all be aware of what the course of studies are, if you have questions. I'm sure Dr. Conamola will, you know, kind of lead us through how she wants us to either send questions ahead of time, or so that everybody is prepared. But my vision, I mean, I would defer to the superintendent, but my vision would be that it would be a true working workshop where we can kind of get, we'll be representing the communities in our positions, they'll be representing, you know, the professional positions, and hopefully we can feel good about it at the end, that we have all answered our questions that come up throughout the year.
I think I agree with that point, like, this could be something important, because we've all seen sort of reactive situations from the public to some content that we've had in our schools versus giving a proactive opportunity for them to see what's about to be in the curriculum. So that could be.
Right, and I don't want to give the impression that I think that we're not being, I think it's a very, very transparent, as it exists, is transparent and welcoming to the public. I think what you're talking about, and I agree with, we could probably talk in coordination with the superintendent and her staff about what that would look like and what would be best.
Can I just also add, though, that we have to have some faith in the process that's being used, and if we have a 26 to one, or 27 to zero, it seems that the people who are deeply involved in doing this and putting together this information for us seem to feel strongly that these books are appropriate. So I feel like I have to have some faith in what they put forth. I do think having public involvement, and certainly parental involvement in any process is always valuable, but I do think we also have to have some faith that this is the list, especially in light of the fact that UConn has this as part of their recommendations. I just feel like, I don't know what the expectation is for us tonight, but given that this was opened in October, I'm concerned that we would be passively asking for further extension of this, given that these books are being now.
Do we need to vote on this?
I believe that's what we need to do.
Do we need to take action on this?
Can I just have one clarify on this? Laura says that, you know, the votes are 27 to zero. I just want to reiterate, did you say not everybody is required to read this book, who is voting?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's in line with the curriculum.
You know, you, my point is, you could be voting, but yet you have not read the literature.
Well, you're right.
But we wouldn't expect everybody in the CPDC to read every algebra book cover to cover. They are, they also are trusting their directors and their chairs of their departments to say, we have fettered out this book, and we are putting it forward in good faith. And to kind of summarize it in a fair and accurate way, I think it would be a real burden to put on that personal, I mean, on that committee or subcommittee expectation that they would all be reading cover to cover every book and every textbook that we offer. I don't think that's reasonable.
So the synopsis of these books is line five? Is that where it is? Because I tried to.
No, there's seven. It's seven, right.
Seven.
Seven, paragraph seven.
Paragraph seven?
Yes.
Because I noticed five is different, too. Between the books.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean by.
Number five correlates to the particular course.
Course.
And then number seven is the description of the text.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was trying. Back to the, so you make the point, Lisa, obviously, that all of the folks that are there may not, and to Laura's point also, have read every single one of them cover to cover, any of what comes through, because they're making recommendations based on the departments that they work in and talk to the entire UConn group. That's the way that this committee was set up by our policy many years ago to operate. We have had some conversations about how that could look a little bit different. I will say that this is a much more comprehensive process for any of us than most districts utilize. To have a committee that's this large, that goes through the materials and the curriculum is not the norm, nor is it always the norm that it goes through a second level at the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee. So I think there's some possible conversation to be had about what it looks like, to your point. I don't think that every, for example, it's a mixed group, so there are K to 12, sometimes, depending on the meeting, pre-K to 12 educators in the room, so there are individuals who go on the word of what would be best to teach to pre-K, because there are pre-K teachers that might be there, and there are individuals that listen to the high school English teachers who may teach third grade and will never use one of these books. So they have a discussion about it, and I don't know that if we kept the committee structure the same and required every person that participates in it to really go through every piece of instructional materials, that they would continue to serve our committee, to be honest, because you see the volume of things that comes through. So I think there's conversation to be had, but if we want to decide on doing it differently, in the meantime, they've been doing it by the policy for, I don't know how many years, to be honest, it predates me.
I can add that this is ELA-heavy, but there are other textbooks science-based, and so it could be multiple science textbooks or math. Sure, it could be physics, it could be, this just happens to be a lot of nonfiction and fiction that we're looking at here, but otherwise, you're talking books that have been recommended based on what they're trying to cover in their course. So it really depends on what's needed at that time, what fluctuates.
So there is, to sum it up, there's a reliance on the expertise of the individuals that are proposing it, whether it's English teachers, or physics teachers, or math teachers, or the elementary school teachers.
Any other questions about this? Are we prepared to take a vote to move these forward? Do I have a motion to approve? Jason moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Passed unanimously?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on to policy 6111, page 65, school calendar setting and graduation date provision, first read.
Would you like me to speak to this? You've mentioned it in the.
Please.
So, as you know, we already set the graduation date, because the law changed and allowed us to do that. We discussed at that meeting that that also meant we would have to come back to this policy, because we have a policy that speaks to how the graduation date would be set, which would be the 180th day of the year, and we had our snow days or other emergency closures. So what we are proposing tonight, we've already taken through the policy committee, and we, to be clear, put it on as a first read, because that's the way we put it on the agenda. What we are actually asking for tonight, however, you see, this is a, to, it'll be a three-paragraph policy, and the last, the last paragraph is one sentence. What we're actually asking is to take action on it tonight, because we want to rectify our own compliance with our policies, because we have set the graduation date in accordance with law, and the law has changed faster than this policy changed, so.
And we missed the meeting in December.
And we missed a meeting in December, which is where this would have been. So what we are proposing is simply that henceforth, it'd be about setting the school calendar, and that we take out the paragraph about determining when graduation is.
The rest is existing policy.
The rest is existing policy.
Okay. That's all.
The red line, we just want to remove.
That's what I want to show.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
So we are, normally, we would bring this to for a first read, and there would be time to go through it again, at, you know, at everyone's leisure, on our own time, in the board packet, and come back, or send emails, questions. the board packet, and come back, or send emails, questions, given how short it is. Like, the hope tonight is that we could make a motion to approve it.
Is your own item?
Yes.
Okay.
This isn't a dense policy that needs a lot of rereading. We decided the policy committee to bring forward and ask for a vote. Does anyone?
This is an easy one.
This should be an easy one, in other words, but.
Do you need a motion?
Need a motion to approve? Jackie?
Yeah, motion to approve, six, 111.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
David, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passed unanimously. Now move on to the opposed 2020, 2021 Board of Education Budget.
Okay. Let's see, again. So, as the board is aware, we have spent three separate meetings together on this already, the majority of us. We had our first conversation about this in November. We should have had another in December, we missed that because of the weather, so we did two meetings last week to go through this, and to pour through the numbers in more detail, and ask questions, and really examine where we were. So, given that level of work that we have done in the last three meetings, particularly in the last two last week, we wanted to go through an overview again tonight of a shorter version, see if we still have any questions, and then have possible action this evening, because as you know, the town has asked us to have the budget to them from the board by February 3rd, and actually, at this point, they've asked for it by this Friday. The initial date was February 3rd, and now we're like on Friday, because we know our meeting is tonight. That said, obviously, if we had any issues tonight, we could look to schedule another special meeting to have a conversation about it again, just putting that out there, because we are expected to take action, but if we came to the end and we're not prepared to do that, we could have a different conversation. So, as you should already went through our mission statement at the beginning of the meeting, I'll keep moving. This is just a highlight of last year's budget, which, as you know, at the time was a 1.96% increase, just below 2%, and we continued our move forward with our safety and security plan, we increased the wellness teacher, kindergarten teacher even at that time, and increased the amount of hours we had with our certified occupational therapist assistants. Our budget process this year looked much the same as it did last year. We spent a lot of time, pretty much from the time that the budget was approved last year, until, I brought it to you again, in November. Every season is budget season to some degree, because you're no sooner finished with one than you begin to work on the next, particularly with how early our budget is. Our administrative team worked together for many, many hours, and I'm going to point out that, as you know, they were here with us last week, they are not all here with us tonight, in part because so many of them, as we said earlier, are ill, or they wouldn't have been here with us tonight. So thank you to the couple that made it through. From this amount of work was done in the buildings by teachers, department coordinators, and administrators in helping us to get to where we are tonight, because as you know, there was a lot of work to be done with this budget. Our goals that we kept in mind as we developed this budget are our overarching goals from our blueprint for excellence, around student learning, communication, partnerships, systems, and our interpersonal relationships. So where we wanted to start, obviously, was what we knew we needed in order to continue the progress toward our district-wide goals. And so, directly tied to the goals that we have set in our blueprint for our next three to five years, we made a decision upfront that no matter what else we were able to do with this budget, we knew we needed to do these pieces. To continue to invest in our library media centers, our maker spaces, to continue our technology acquisition and the improvement of all of our technology, to continue to develop and implement our social emotional learning program, which is going to keep us ahead of the curve for what the state is already beginning to require, further investment in enrichment pathways for our students, so for example, what we've talked about here is part of the budget, standardized testing to uniformly identify our talented and gifted students, and the addition of a math teacher here at the high school, so that we'd be able to offer additional opportunities in math, business, and technology, because as you know, in the previous year, there were a number of math courses that we had student interest in, but we were not able to run because of staffing. In part, as you see, we're looking for a certified math teacher, but a certified math teacher can also teach business. The other thing it can do for us is free up some of our individuals who, right now, teach a business course to teach a technology course, which is one of the most exciting pieces of this for us. But also, as you know, I'll just, as a couple of examples, list the courses we were unable to offer, but had student interest in, and in some cases, we had full sections that we needed to eliminate because we didn't have appropriate staffing in our math department to run them. So we had two sections of AP ECE stats that could have been filled that we took out. We had an AP Computer Principles course, an Algebra II Skills course that we did not run, which, as you know, is to assist all students in addition to their Algebra II course. Anyone who needs additional help can sign up for Algebra II Skills. We were unable to offer another section of Personal Finance, which, as you know, is a graduation requirement, and every section that we did run at the high school had 25 in it, which is our cap, and one actually had 26. So we had another potentially full section. So if we are able to add in this math teacher, we will be able to teach three more sections of math courses, two sections per semester of Personal Finance, and we will free up a business teacher to teach business courses, as I mentioned, also then potentially freeing up another technology teacher. Talk a little bit more about some of the rest that are there. So this is where we started, $62,670,625 and 50 cents. This is what we call our initial budget, as we technically roll over. So as you know, what we try to do is zero-based budgeting, but there still is some piece of a rollover budget, meaning take the current staff that we know will move forward, move their salaries forward, for example, that's part of the quote rollover process as we begin. And when we first began with this number, this included all of our contractual increases, an initial rollover of expenditures before we went closer through line by line, and all of our initial requests from school, district departments, and our schools. But what you see is, if we had moved that forward number, we would have got a 6.94% increase, with everything rolled forward, maintained, plus the additional requests that were put through from departments and schools. And clearly, in November, we knew that number was not a viable one. So we began looking for what we might be able to do to try to reduce that number, clearly, but at the same time, we discussed those, the needs that we had, and also what was really driving this budget forward, what we would refer to as the budget drivers. And I would put them all into one of these three categories, generally speaking. So, you know, we've had increased student enrollment in our, particularly in our younger grades, kindergarten for sure. So tonight, we are 14 from the same period last year, that's only 14 students overall, but if you look at the breakdown of where they are, you see how many more we have in the elementary grades. So we have increased student enrollment in the elementary schools, particular grades, we have an increasing student need based on our population and some of our special education needs, and then what I would call our contractual obligations, which I don't mean to say are only our contractual agreements with staff, I mean contractual obligations writ large. So whether we're talking about utilities, or insurance, or staff contracts, just as a whole, where are we with some of what is beyond our control from a finance standpoint? So first, we have to back up to what I'd consider the initial driver of this budget. The initial driver is carryover additions from the year that we are living in. So remember that when we adopted our budget last spring, we had to add in additional positions after that budget was adopted. So that budget was passed, that budget was adopted for the year that we are living in, and as we move forward and continue to get registrations the rest of the spring, all summer, and even into the fall, we had to hire another two full-time kindergarten teachers. That's in addition to the one that we had budgeted for, that you saw. We already saw the enrollment was creeping up, to be safe, we put in a kindergarten teacher, and as it turned out, that still wasn't enough. So right now, in the year that we're living in, we added two kindergarten teachers above and beyond the adopted budget. We still need them next year. We don't know our kindergarten numbers right now, registration is just starting, we do our best to predict it, in the sense of coordinating with Town Hall, for example, about the number of births from five years ago that would be coming to school now. That's a, that's a moving target, because that assumes that you were born in Avon five years ago, you may have moved here in the meantime, you may have moved out in the meantime, but that's one of the indicators that we have between that, reaching out to some of our local pre-Ks besides our own. So we know where our own pre-K moving forward, we try to get some sense of how many students are enrolled in private pre-Ks, and we collaborate with the town to get birth records. All of that said, it's obviously not an exact science, or we wouldn't have had to add two kindergarten teachers in. We also had to put back in a grade four teacher as we moved those students forward after the passing of budget, and three additional paraeducators based on the needs of students. So in the year that we are living in, we have had to, and we continue to have to, actually, because we have not finished with the transfers that we will make to continue to fund those salaries. We did for the teachers, you saw that in a finance committee meeting, we were lucky enough that we had reduced dollar amount in our special education tuition line, so we took some of that to be able to pay for the teachers who we had to add in. And remind me of the other one that we did the transfer from? The degree. We discussed that last Wednesday. We get notification from our certified staff when they are on a degree track to, to get their next degree, so they're going from a bachelor's to a master's degree, for example, and they would move a lane in salary and/or, in some cases, get a stipend, depending on where they are in their movement. So we have to budget that number, because if they finish their degree, we will then move their salary. Life happens at times for some folks, for all of us, as they're going through the programs and they don't necessarily finish on time. So we had good and bad news. Bad news for the folks that were unable to finish the degree program in time, good news for us from a budgetary standpoint, that we knew we were able to transfer that money to cover these salaries. So you can see that that's not something that's viable as we move into next year. So as people say to me, well, you've already been able to absorb the salaries this year, you should be able to do the same next year. No, because we were, as I said, fortunate enough that both of those happened to work out in this year, to be able to transfer large sums in to cover these teachers and paraeducators. The paraeducators, we are still working on the transfers of, we'll talk about that more as we move on. Can you go back one second, please, Mr. Meddick? What I just want to point out is, this budget increase, this is not percent that those lines increase, this is the overall impact. So when we talk about our overall increase, a half a percent of that overall increase are these positions that we added in in the current year, moving them forward to next year. Similarly, we, thank you, we have a .7 Library Media Specialist in this budget. I mentioned at our previous meeting how difficult that is to actually find as a, as a position, and hopeful that we're able to find someone that can be a .7 instead of full-time. That is a shortage area. We have budgeted .7, but really we're at $83,000 for this in the budget. That is another example of the increasing enrollment, however. So this is to be split between Royenbrook and Pine Grove, and as it stands, we have Library Media Specialists in both places, that is a class that students rotate through now. This is not the way that it was in the past, when maybe of us went to school and we went to the library to check out a book, and, or maybe use a computer, and we left. They are, they are taught by our Library Media Specialists, they are taught to do research, they are taught to use technology, they are working in our maker spaces and creating things, and, and meeting the big picture goals that we have towards creativity and being able to teach our students 21st century skills. When you look at the enrollment, the classes are so large for the, for the individual Library Media Specialists at each of the schools, that we can't maintain that moving our students forward. Even as it stands, we have had to assist with bringing in some additional staff, pulling them from other assignments to assist our Library Media Specialists this year. And by right, we should have put that in right now, like we did the kindergarten teachers, but attempting to live within this budget, we were unable to do that. But we will not make it through next year without putting a person in. Likewise, we already know right now we have a need for three more paraeducators for some of our students with special needs in the, in the upcoming school year. So if you look again at the bottom here, we're now at .27. So these essentials, these staffing needs for both our enrollment and what our students are presenting as needs that will be driven by their IUPs, we are at .77% of an increase, so three-quarters of 1% increase already on the budget we're living in, just by these essential staffing needs, some of which are already with us that we just need to move Just again, as a reminder for everybody, I have it finally burned into my brain, 1% increase is approximately $586,000. So for every $586,000 added onto the budget from current year to next year, it's a 1% So then we come to what I refer to as the contractual obligations, big picture. Our transportation contract has a .16% impact on the overall budget, because that has increased, you see in the other lines. Our special education tuition moving forward into next year, we see, moving up. As I said, we were lucky enough to be able to manage some of that this year, and through our nonlaborating account, we're able to identify and pay for individual students who we know of in advance. And our benefits, this is primarily our OPEB benefits that have driven up our premiums for after-retirement, health insurance and so on, we talked about that in our last budget meeting. That is, remind me, that is $277,000 of an increase, I believe, in the OPEB line. So you can see how that, in and of itself, and we just said $586,000 is 1%, so $277,000, that's the impact, .57% on the budget. So now you look at transportation, tuition, and benefits, all of which we don't have any control over, our tuition, excuse me, our transportation contract is, has another five years on it, this is the normal increase to that, plus increase related to special education transportation costs altogether, which can change from year to year, our contract remains the same, but depending on individual student needs, that can change some of our routing, some of our transportation costs. So now here, we're at another .99, for argument's sake, another 1% increase. So between the staffing that we spoke about already, that, most of which we have in place right now and need to move forward to next year, additional paraeducators that are governed by students' plans that are necessary for next year, and Library Media Specialists who we actually need this year, but are holding off and working with our teachers to try to cover, and our teaching assistants, we're at 1.77%, just that. So that would mean, if we really just rolled everything forward, made no other adjustments, we'd be just on 2% of an increase on those essentials. So with that in mind, let's go back a second. Remember, I told you where we started, was $62,670,625. Remember, I told you where we started, was $62,670,625, which had everything I just talked about in it and more. I'll give you some of the examples of what else was in it that we cut out. As you see, before we came to you even last Monday, we had made nearly $1.3 million worth of reductions to try to bring this number down to as reasonable of a number as we could bring forward with the needs that we're talking about. Those range from, for example, we had an additional land tech in the budget, another person for the IT department. Requiring this much technology, we're using it more and more in every grade level, it's difficult to manage from the IT department perspective. Some of it we have to look at too, whether or not we're paying extra in overtime and so on, depending on what we need and some of the, what we had been running at one point before we changed some of those contracts. Do I think we need another person in the IT department in the long run? Yes. Did we need it next year? Yes. Need it this year? Yes. But we had to prioritize what we were looking for as we moved this budget forward because the increase was unmanageable otherwise. So that's a good example of something that's a part of that $1.3 million, or the initial reductions. Everything that we had from our schools and our departments would have been beneficial to include in the budget. We weren't asked to keep it, to put anything in that we couldn't see the need for either right now or at some time in the near future. But living within these means, we narrow it down to what we're talking about here tonight, which is frankly more a maintenance budget than anything else. There's very, very little in the way of add-ons from a financial standpoint for us. So, making that $1.3 million reduction, we landed at $61,393,543 and 48 cents. So I want to put this in a different perspective, again, to make it cohesive for you. So if you look at the overall drivers that we just talked about, put them all up on one screen, the needs in the current year that we're living in that we are making up for in next year, and that we need moving forward, and our non-negotiable additions, the transportation, tuition, and benefits. If you add all of those, you see we're just below two percent. We could the math teacher in also to be able to manage the requirements of the high school. So, without every one of those, which, as you know, I've come to you already and said, are essentials to be able to provide a current level of programming and instruction for students, we would be at 2.86 percent.
This does not include salary increases that are contractual?
Meaning, in the numbers that I have up here or in the?
So where on here is every teacher has an increase in their contract?
Right.
What percentage is that and how does that add to the overall number?
Right.
Because that's not here.
That's not here. This is simply what these are. These alone move the budget 2.86 over the current year. So, and I'll go through the other thesis. Mr. Fyscher. So, where does that leave us? Unfortunately, and I know this is unfortunate because this is the best that we can do when we're looking at a number that large, to maintain what we have. So, what we call our new money, our gross increase, and again, we have to talk about it as a grossing up, is a 4.76 percent increase. Remember that in that grossing up is also the revenue that the district anticipates getting, some of which has also increased, which we'll talk about as we do another slide. Again, thank you, I've said it many times already, thank you to everyone for your input and for working so hard with us to get the budget to where we are. You can go, please, to the, so you see how it breaks down overall? Approximately eighty percent of the, can you go back, please? Approximately eighty percent of the overall budget is salary and benefits. Five percent, a little more than five percent is transportation. Two percent of it is utilities. Four percent of it is our contracted services, which are primarily for our special education students. 5.57 percent of this increase is tuition, primarily for our special education students who we are unable to service within the district, some of which is our magnet school tuition, a very small percentage of that. I think we talked about that at one of our last meetings. Two percent of the increase is on supplies and equipment, which include things, for example, that we talked about in our previous meeting, $15,000 of that is mulch, for example, for the new plantings outside near the turf field. And we have known that we will need to include that. Some of that, for example, we talked about this in the previous meeting, just under $11,000 of that supply and equipment increase is related to the increase in student numbers, the increase in sections. So, we have two new first-grade sections that need to be put in to manage the kindergarters moving up. We had to outfit them with supplies. See that top breaks down? Go past this one. Let me go, I'll come back to this, I'm going to start a question or a salary. So...
I think what my question really is, so, because now I'm confused on that previous slide. You showed us all the additions was 1.9 percent, but at the bottom, though, it's 2.86.
With the math teacher in there also.
Okay. So my question is, out of this 4.76, how much is just the increase from all the contractual salaries?
Everybody in the district.
Correct.
So, we do have that number.
Because, because if we, let's say we didn't add any of this necessity.
Right.
We just ran with who we have, what was that, what would be the increase we would have if we didn't change any of this?
Right. So if we ran with who we had right now?
Correct. Ignoring all the student needs?
Two kindergarten teachers.
Correct.
The ones we're living with.
Because they're here.
Correct.
But not adding the teacher and the additional three paras that we need for next year?
So it would be the additional three paras and the math teacher.
And the media specialist.
And the points added by the media specialist.
Right.
Yes. Yes. And I have that, I know I actually already have that done, so just give me one more.
Yep.
Let me go back through these, and we did actually run some of that.
Isn't that the 2.8? I think what Jeff is asking, that 2.8, and the 1.9 is the additional staff? Is that not the breakdown he showed us?
That's why I think, I don't, that's what I'm trying to say.
Go back, can you go back to that? Go back to the?
Is the 2.86 without that top? So if, to answer my question, the 2.86, and then, so if we said you don't?
We had all of that.
Right, if we?
Would be 2.86.
We throw all that out, it's 2.86.
Yeah.
The 1.9 is the extra.
When you add the 1.9 plus the 2.86, you get our budget.
Okay. Thank you. I don't do math.
That's right.
No, that's okay.
Thanks for asking it again.
Thank you.
We wanted to show us there. So, yes, if not of that existed, we would be at 2.86.
And the 2.86 includes staff that wasn't in the previous budget that we hired midway through the year that now must be on the budget?
No.
No, because they're in there.
That's the, that's the 1.9.
Correct. That's the two full-time kindergarten teachers, the one fourth-grade teacher, those that we had to hire, and then three of the paras we had to hire this year.
Midway.
Right, so if we don't include those, right, if, and I'm not saying we're getting rid of anyone. If we pretend they weren't here and we kept staff because of contractual obligations, insurance, all, anything else that we have that we can't control, it's 2.86. But now based upon these individual needs, right, including the transportation tuition benefits, which in my mind, our hands are tied on.
Which is why I'm afraid of them is contractual.
Right. We have to do the 1.9, and that brings us to the 4.76.
So really, at this point, this is the number going forward. I think that the 4.96 is what we're looking at going forward. I think it's important for everybody to understand.
4.76.
4.76.
Just a little bit better.
As a grossed-up number, we really can't predict what impact that has on taxpayers right yet because we really don't know, the town has to do its?
Because, because it's about the grand list, but it's also about, it's also about the revenue. So, so back to the, back to the revenue piece of it, because, and this again, is managed on the, is managed on the town side, which is why we gross up the budget and then the determination is made on how to set the mill rate on the town side. So on our side, we quote gross up the budget, meaning we add in to our requests. So if you look at this as, this is the amount of dollars we are requesting from the town, and they pay us whatever they determine, so let's say for argument's sake that this budget moves forward. They give us the full amount of this budget, including the revenue that we have anticipated upfront. And whatever revenue comes in during the course of the year, because it does come in after the year starts, during fiscal year, goes to the town because they've given us what we anticipate upfront. So it's important to point out that we're very conservative on the revenues because we don't want to leave town in a place of shortage. So, that said, you see that most of what we're projecting is the same, and in some places, a little bit less. So, for example, athletic pay-to-play receipts at the high school. 1920 expected is $158,000, 2020, 2021, $155,000. So it's a $3,000 difference. But again, we look closely at the numbers of students we know we have playing in the current year and try to forecast that forward for next year based on enrollment and Heather, frankly, working backwards for many years, sometimes usually anywhere from two to six years backwards and looking at the trends and forecasting forward. So, in some places, you'll say, you'll see that we are anticipating revenues down. On the other hand, if you look down at our last line, special education tuition reimbursement, this is our, this is one of our open choice lines. So, we are forecasting our open choice revenue for special education tuition that comes back to us from Hartford to be $800,000 more than we forecast in the previous year. The reason for that is because it's actually reflective of what is coming through in the year that we're living in right now. Unfortunately, when the rates are set for what we can build back to Hartford for services for some of our open choice students, which is a part of our agreement under open choice, they set the rates typically in May, if I remember correctly. Sometime around May, they set what those rates will be. In other words, what they will pay any receiving districts of choice students who need services from special education that are above normal per pupil expenditure. They set the current rates last May. This number is using actually the current rates. But last year, when we did this budget, we had the previous year's rates. So when we anticipated the revenue, we actually didn't anticipate as much as will most likely come back in to the town, which is good. That's a, that's a good problem to have on the town side, and on our side because we were giving money upfront. Don't publish new rates again in May. These could be, their rates could go up even from this, because generally speaking, they go up from year to year, they make, they make adjustments. Those aren't what we're going to use, though, we're going to use the existing rates. This number is with the existing rates. So I point that out because I think we have to remember in the way that the process works, that that's also impacting our bottom line on the increase. Because we are anticipating another approximately $600,000, there's $800,000 in that particular line, but if you look over the others, there's some losses that we anticipate in other places. That's in our grossed-up number. So another $600,000 added on top of our increase is about two percent. So, just keeping in mind that as we turn this over, our grossed-up amount also includes a two percent increase that's on the revenue side. It's just included. So if you, if we take that into consideration, we're at 4.76, right? Excuse me, one percent, one percent, not two percent, a little bit over one percent. 3.76 is the extra piece of the revenue, right? And then you see what we have in for needs back down to the 2.86.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Yeah.
I think what you're basically talking is, we thought our revenue would be flat.
Right.
But we're going to make the same amount next year, the actual increase would be 3.76 percent.
Yeah, actually even a little bit less because?
Because we think we're going to take in more money.
The increase is higher.
As if the increase is higher.
Yeah. Because we have to gross up the budget now to submit it to the town.
So because we're going to make, we think we're going to make about $600,000 more next year, the number looks worse.
Right. Right. Precisely. Jeff?
So here is my frustration, and it actually is not this year. It's next year, the year after, and the year after. Last week, we had a conversation in the meeting regarding the staff. We know from the drivers, eighty percent of our budget is staff-related. We also know that seventy percent of our staff is at top step. We also know that a majority of our staff is mid-career, so we're likely to have them for the next fifteen to twenty years. It seems like then every year, we are going to be stuck with, starting at a base of an increase of 2.86, just based upon all the contractual salaries and so forth, just as they go from year to year, in line with our contracts. And so my frustration is, and you said it yourself, this is a maintainer budget. And in order for us to have a reasonable rate, our hands seem to be tied because we have to get a, only maintain. So my challenge back is, you need to find some way to get that initial increase down in order for us to meet the strategic objectives we have, to bring in the new programs we want. Because what you've said this evening is, we don't have that ability because of the staff. And I will be the first to acknowledge, staff is how we deliver our product, right? And you've said it, and I agree, that staff is a worthy investment. We can't do what we do without staff. And it's all staff. It's you, it's the teachers, it's the administrators, it's everybody in that eighty percent. I just don't want to be sitting here every year, being asked to do a five percent increase without adding to the quality of education in this town. I'm not happy with just the concept of maintaining five percent.
So, one, I agree. Two, as I know I've said to you previously, in the entirety of the time I've been a superintendent, I've never stood in public and asked for an increase that looked like this. And going back to, so I want to speak to two points. One, note that I said generally speaking, this is a maintenance budget, because it isn't all maintenance. Two, to your challenge to me and to us, I think, that's why we made the reductions that you're saying. All of those reductions weren't just the pie in the sky version of things that people asked for. They were things that, they were also things that were already here that we, that we took down. So, for example, when you go through the line-by-line, and we talked about this before, you'll see that there, the majority of the budget lines where we had control are either at a zero percent increase, some of them are even reduced. And our, we worked closely with the building administrators to do that in a way that wasn't going to impact what we were delivering. So for example, we just simply said, okay, we spent a lot of money last year and the year before, for example, on these classroom libraries. They're moving along, they may need a refresher, but we don't need to spend that same, we don't need to maintain that funding at that level. It's about $60,000, close to $60,000, if I remember correctly, on those classroom library sets last year. We looked at that line and took it down and said, okay, we could move those forward, we could buy more titles, we could give more choices, of course, that's great. This is not the year to do that. We're not truly going to impact our educational programming by not spending another $60,000 on classroom libraries. on classroom libraries. So let's take it out of that line, because that $60,000 could pay for something else that we truly know we need to move forward in this year. For example, 2/3 of a math teacher's salary. So we've done that already, in reallocating what's here. So the benefit to the educational programming and quality, I think, is that, one, we do have things that we are continuing to do that are included in this budget. Some of them are just not necessarily things that are that expensive. So for example, the standardized testing for us to identify our talented and gifted students in a uniform way, which we've talked about doing, we're talking about $1,500 there. Continuing to invest in our maker spaces, we've kept that level of funding about the same, but we reduced funding again in other lines to be able to maintain most of that. The math teacher, yes, that is an addition. Clearly, that is an addition.
Yeah, absolutely.
And of everything that's here, I would say that is the one that is the addition that's not directly tied to enrollment.
Except for the fact that we couldn't run math courses.
Except for the fact we couldn't run math courses.
Because that falls under the...
So it's harder, right. It's a harder, it's much easier to tie, I need a kindergarten teacher.
Right.
To the number of students.
But that's my large concern. For the last six years, and we've talked about this, we've seen a spike in enrollment at the elementary schools. And we're constantly, every year, coming in going, we need to add more staff, we need to add more staff. And I truly think you have prepared your expectation. However, they show up, they go to Shirley, and all of a sudden, there's a need. So that's unfortunate, that's fortunately, unfortunately, it's a...
It's a problem now.
Exactly. I just look, and when we look back at that breakdown of the percentages of the budget, if we can just go back, I'm sorry, I'm sorry medic, that's this one. I look at this, 80% we can't touch. Transportation, 5.2%, we can't touch. The utilities, we talked about, we can't touch. The special ed line, where are you? Oh, that's not all under contract, it's 4%. Already, someone's helping me with math, that's 90% of the budget that our hands are tied on. And I don't know, that's where I'm frustrated. Because we're going to then, in my mind, every year, have the same debate. Bring to the town a budget, a number that none of us are thrilled with, but our hands are tied, and I don't know how to rectify that.
Well, I think part of it is, and back to the point I was already making, part of it is in thinking about effective uses of the resources that we have. And sometimes that means reallocation of staff, and it might also mean reallocation of money in lines for other items. So, for example, we did reallocate staff last year, based on where the enrollment was, picking up and dropping, because we look at it across the entire district. So we moved a team from middle school, for example. As a whole, they lost an entire team. We had to make up for the need that we see of a bubble class that's coming through down from Thompson Brook. We have the same thing in fourth grade. So we have shifted around staff already quite a bit, instead of just adding on, and I think we're going to have to continue to do that. And part of it, frankly, is leftover from the '16, '17 year, where we made all of the reductions in staff. And so honestly, some of this is that coming back around, because I think we have been, for the most part, operating on a more bare-bones level of staffing, in some ways, on top of the fact that the enrollment prepped up in the elementary schools. So one of the things that we look at when we're hiring new people for these positions is the certifications that they bring along with them, so that we know whether or not we're going to be able to use them in other positions as students move through.
And as you know, that was my question last week regarding the enrollments, particularly at the high school, that are we effectively using our staff there? And I understand a lot of it can be resolved by some scheduling. I just would like to see a stronger effort to ensure that they're effectively being used. Thank you.
And we've had those conversations.
Yes.
And I agree, and I think that some of that is a leftover issue from trying to run courses that don't have as many students in them as we would like, from them also being canceled previously, or in some cases.
Can I just speak to just one?
Yes.
I agree with you, I think this is a number that we're all concerned with, I think you brought up a lot of good points. And I don't remember, were you here when Dr. Patty Foot was here? I forget.
Not, kind of.
But not for her budget, because when Bridget talks about a maintainer budget, one of the exciting things that we got to understand and participate in was they, she did add maker spaces, and I can see in Bridget's budget, we're still kind of, that vision is still kind of a thing here for us. And I think that at the time, she had pitched it as really important to the gifted and talented program. There were a variety of reasons why it was a really important kind of piece of the puzzle here at Avon. So I thought that was, I know it does look like a maintainer, but we did put that kind of extra, you're still kind of feeding that particular piece of that new programming, it looks like, in this budget.
Well, yes. And back to the maintenance budget versus continuing to drive us forward. Even adding in the kindergarten teachers isn't just maintenance. I mean, we could look at it in black and white and say, we have contractual limits about numbers of students. To be perfectly honest, I see that as a secondary issue. I think most of us that work in schools see that as a secondary issue. It's more about the level of instruction that we're able to provide, particularly in the younger grades, when it's most important that the class sizes are smaller, for us to maintain that level of staffing. And I think I mentioned this in one of our workshops, even with this level of staffing, we're talking about some of our kindergarten classes that have 18 students in them, which may sound like, oh, 18 students. When I went to school, there was 30 of us. That might be the case, but you can also see by the needs that we're talking about with fully mainstreamed special education students alongside of regular education students, it's not only about the number of students in a classroom or in a program, it's about the needs that are presented. And if you think about what September looks like in a kindergarten classroom with children, many of whom it's the first experience of a full day at real school, 18 of them is a lot in a classroom. So this only maintains that. We could not, we could, technically, we could not put in, and we could overload those classes and pay beyond the contractual limits. That wouldn't be sound for us educationally to set that.
But it's not so heavy at the high school level.
But it's not so heavy at the high school level. And frankly, if you want to have larger class sizes, where would you rather have them?
High school.
Right. So to your point, there is balancing out to do there. Right now, we're trying to make it work for our youngest students. And actually, just to be clear, too, it's not really an option to overload the classrooms, because we actually don't even have the space in the classrooms. If you come through and you see what a kindergarten, pre-K, first grade look like, there's not room for more. There's not room for more kindergarten at this point. There's also not room for classrooms at one of the schools, but we're already aware of that.
And I'm not convinced the rebalancing is actually going to move this number either. So, but it's more about a philosophical, in terms of how we're using the money.
Correct.
That's the part that, and I've voiced this, I think, before, that's the thing I'm most concerned with.
So another example, again, forgive me, because you've all heard it before in the workshops, but again, for the benefit of this conversation, and the public conversation again about it, another piece of this, for example, that's not a maintenance budget, is our technology acquisition. So we do carry forward our leasing of technologies. You know, that practice started one before my time. And as a result of what we are carrying forward this year, we're going to have Chromebooks that our kindergartners have more access to, for example, which is necessary in 2020. Do they all need a one-to-one Chromebook in every single kindergarten? No. But they do need access to them in the classroom.
But are we using those resources effectively? So to my point last week.
Yes.
Why are we still purchasing consumables at the elementary level when we have a Chromebook? What is really, how is that Chromebook being used? And could it be used, and at the same time, I understand, there may be then licensing issues, and there may be that other cost. But if we're purchasing and investing in the technology, we need to be using it.
I agree. And I would say that we are using it well, more and more so, and I credit our teachers with that. Elizabeth Ferry, who you know works very hard, Digital Instructional Specialist out there with teachers, our Library Media Specialist, and the IT department as a whole, because it's more and more integrated into our curriculum and teaching and learning. But that said, to your point about consumables, so for example, I think one of the things that Mr. Blatchman was talking about is our Word Study Program. 2020, we call it Word Study. We went to school, we called it Phonics, just to give you a sense of what it is that we're talking about. So there are consumables that are associated with that programming that you have to have the materials. So to your point, are they online? Yes. We did math for us purchasing the consumables for the number of students that we needed it for. Was it better, it sounds crazy to say the word investment when we're talking about consumables, but from a licensing or a paper consumable practice, we did better buying the consumables. And consumables being some of the workbooks and so on that they use as part of that program. And that is an absolutely necessary part of their literacy development and our programming. So I agree with you, and I think every time we are looking at a textbook or something like this, we are looking at online licensing versus paper.
So I just, to that point, so with an online licensing, is that something that's renewed annually?
Yes, you purchase the number of licenses that you need in much the same way that you purchase textbooks. It's just the online license versus a book in hand.
But often, we purchase a textbook and use it for more than one year.
Correct.
So that's why I was asking, is an online license...
Yes, yearly.
...usable for more than one year?
Not typically.
Not typically.
And even when we do online licensing, there are still textbooks that need to be purchased for other purposes, for students that have needs of having the book at home, for example, our second set of books. So we never get away entirely from purchasing some textbooks in print on top of the online licensing. I would say our overall reliance on textbooks, like all school districts, is diminishing. With the advent of the internet, I think more and more, we do lose less in terms of textbook expenditures.
So all I was going to say is, I've had experience where I know the licenses aren't always annual, but they're definitely finite.
Right.
Right? The advantage sometimes is those textbooks...
It depends on the publisher.
The publisher and all that, but there's always finite, they always want you to pay some more.
Right. Because they put up the next edition, they change three words, and you have to buy new licenses.
Right. But at the same time, they do, we do expect with the online versions to make up, you know, for them to increase and update throughout. You know, I think the problem that we've run into in traditional school is that we're stuck with tech for 15, 20 years, and it never updates. But I just, again, if we're going to invest in this one-to-one with the expectation we're spending millions of dollars on Chromebooks for all of our students, just wanted to see that they're using besides simply to type their papers.
No, I totally agree. I think, I'm glad you brought it up again, because it's one of the things that I think I need to point out. As the district rolled out the one-to-one initiative, which started before my time, I'm not sure, Heather, do you remember what year we started with the technology lease? It's some time ago now.
It was even before I was here.
So it's a misnomer of sorts, and I know all of you already know this, what I'm about to say. It's one-to-one, they don't take them home. And part of that is that when the investment initially was made in the technology, we have not followed up with other investments that we could have made, and still could along the way, to change the equivalent of the filtering that students could still utilize those at home. That's one of the things that we haven't done. So we can control the material and the access and so on, and they're here, and they're on the network, but they were never set up to be taken out with individual students. Plus, being leases, that changes the dynamic, because they have to be turned back in. And generally speaking, a lot of districts that have gone the one-to-one route where they truly take home, they are one-to-one. This is my Chromebook. At the end of it, students, they take it all the way through them, or to end of life, then they get a new one, and they take it with them. That's not the way it works for us, because of leasing.
But many of our students would have access to the internet at home.
Many of them, right.
So while in school, they can use their Chromebook for those resources, look, we're Google School.
Absolutely.
Right? So between Google Classroom, Google Drive, as well as so forth.
This is back to the point I'm making about, we would still have to invest in the textbooks for the students who, because we do have students that don't have access at home, for various reasons. Some of it's parental, limiting of what they can access, and some of it is financial.
So I just want to thank you and your team for putting the budget, appreciate all the time, and for the public to understand that we've already had two of the workshops and meetings discussing this, so we spent hours and hours going through these numbers, and you know, this is...
A recap.
Recap of everything that we've already seen, and you know, ask plenty of questions to get to this point. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt a 2020, 2021 Board of Education General Fund gross budget in the amount of $61,393,543.48, having a gross increase of 4.76% over the prior fiscal year.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any who sustain, so it was an eight...
To zero.
...one vote. So it passes. Thank you, Dr. Perrin.
Thank you, and thank you for your work alongside of us, and the many hours that you spent both in workshops and at home, poring over thousands of pages of budget. And I look forward to working with you in the fall, appreciate it.
As do we. So now, we have our second communication from the public, for anyone who has remained with us that perhaps wants to say anything. All right. Then the motion to adjourn?
Are you already there?
Oh, wait, communication from Avon board members, I missed that one, I apologize. I was, is there anything?
I guess I reiterate that Jase generous words to the administration, thank you so much for answering so many questions and for preparing such a budget document for us. Very grateful for that.
Thank you very much.
I'll go that, too. Thank you for all the hard work, all the administrators who helped us put this together, all the board members, and Jeff especially, I think, just to reiterate your point and your hard work, as evidenced by all the questions and comments you've had throughout this process. I think, if I understand, please correct me, but I think one of your points is, a 4.7, 4.8% budget, it's not sustainable long-term. I think your point is, even without the additional needs, right? So we have the core needs that you talked about, even with the additional needs, without those additional needs, a 2.8, what was it, 2.86? Even that's really not sustainable. Thinking about last year's 1.0%. So I, you know, I like your challenge to us all to think about ways to be more efficient in the upcoming years. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? All right, I jumped over, and we already agreed, there's no more communication from the public. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Jason usually moves on that one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so your asses are in this one.